Vice Mayor Doug Young has the prayer and the pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Lord, be with our sister Madeline that she may make a speedy return and her health improve so she can be part of this great council again. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good to see everyone tonight. And I think we have a ceremonial item. We have a Stars Award that we're gonna present tonight.
Mr. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor, members of Murfreesboro City Council. I'm honored this evening to present our next Stars Award, which was unanimously voted on by our committee. And this recipient is an 11-year City of Murfreesboro employee. I'd like to invite Joey Smith to the podium to join the mayor and I to make this presentation. And while I'm inviting Mr. Smith forward, what I'd like to do is read the nomination that was made by this gentleman's coworker. Our recipient tonight is Jason Reed, and I'll go ahead and have Mr. Reed stand. Jason is here with his family this evening. A phone call was recently received advising that Mr. Reed was picking up trash during his course of business. The citizen advised that her 15-year-old daughter was walking to school and came upon two very aggressive pit bulls running at large, and Mr. Reed saw them starting to approach the young lady. He then stopped his garbage truck, blew his horn to distract the dogs from the girl, He exited his truck with his shovel and escorted the young lady back to her mother to ensure that they did not attack her. The mother was extremely grateful and said if Mr. Reed had not taken the actions that he took, her daughter would have without a doubt been severely mauled by the dogs running at large. She did not know how to thank him, so she called the administrative office to let us know. I'd like to go ahead and invite Mr. Reed to the podium, and if we could have his family join us, Mayor McFarland will give the presentation.
Jason, on behalf of the city council, I first want to say Lori and Brennan, is that right? All right. Brennan, how are you?
Well...
Where do you go to school?
Auburn.
All right. Well, we want to say thank you for what you did for one of our residents on behalf of the city council and all of the staff. The Stars Award's one of the highest awards you can get with the city just because it's service above self, almost like the Rotary Club. And we want to say thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for sharing him with us. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank Jason for the work he's doing. Sometimes we get more bad news than we do get good news, but it's just a demonstration of what we do every day. As we always like to say at the Soloway Department, our business is picking up. So, we would just, you know, and all of them try to do a job like this every day. But thank you.
That's really good.
Okay, we'll move into the consent agenda. You have five items in front of you.
Personal comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now moving to the minutes of the March 3rd, 2016 meeting.
Personal comments or corrections, I'll move for approval of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Moving to second readings, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ04 to a mid and area in the Cedar Retreat PRD located along Florence Road.
Move for passage on second reading. Sound.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance?
Picture of the house, the historic home that's on the property. That's been a point of interest for us throughout the process. Initially, we came with a straight zone, a little bit of the history. We came with a straight zoning opportunity. And the home was not a part of the mix when we did straight zoning, more of a traditional type of apartment complex. After some neighborhood feedback from the Brookwood subdivision, as well as some feedback from planning staff, and as well as the developer, we came to realize the home has a lot of value in terms of the history for the site. So when we came back after high recommendation from the planning, the planning commission, they asked us to go really look more into a plan development type process. And that process has allowed the process, allowed the product to morph quite a bit in terms of the site plan. So the height, the site has some sensitivity, but one of the more key components of that sensitivity has been this home. So right now, the intention of the developers for the home to stay, as documented in the pattern book, it'll be used for someone associated with the development in terms of the apartment complex, whether that be a property manager, whether it be a maintenance person, what have you, but it'll stay a single-family residence, but that'll be a focal point of the project. Again, that's another angle of the house, just as you can see, it's just a really beautiful home. As far as the developer's commitment on the home right now, it's to make sure that it's livable. The home's in good shape, it can currently be lived in. There's a few things in terms of a little TLC, porch needs some TLC, new roof, a few things dealing with the brick and the soffit have to be addressed, but other than that, the home is in very good shape. I don't want to go on top of what Margaret Ann's already stated, the adjacent zoning. We really want to focus on the site plan. Here's the site plan. And just to give you a reference point, I guess that you have in front of you, building number 17 inside the pattern book is the home. So that, I want you to realize where that home is, because really, the main axis to the development basically focuses on that home. So when someone turns into the property, well, they're going to look down a main pipe and see the home as the terminus of that axis. And all the land associated with building number 17 is to be preserved, and that's really a result of trying to preserve the trees that are associated with the home. And really, the overall effort is to create, you know, keep the historic nature of the property. So the home's been a catalyst for helping to dictate some of the architecture. We definitely want to use it as a green space credit, but we also want to make sure that it really sets the tone for the whole development. So I want to make sure you have that reference point where the home is. I know the neighbors were quite concerned that the home be preserved, and I think everyone's really excited, including the homeowners currently, they're excited that that history of the home will still be preserved throughout the development. The other things I think that are really important to note is, is building number, it's really just labeled CH, that's the clubhouse, that's on the front portion of the property, right off the right side of the main entrance. The clubhouse has also been highly influenced by the architecture of the existing home. The clubhouse is more through our design process, primarily to shield the pool. A lot of the neighbors were concerned that the pool would be seen from their neighborhood, but also from Manson Pike, and they wanted to make sure that the clubhouse shielded the pool area, so I think we came up with a really good solution there. And right next to that clubhouse is the graveyard. The graveyard is not on our property, but it is a point of concern for the neighbors, and they wanted to make sure there's a vegetative buffer, some sort of a natural buffer between the clubhouse pool area and the graveyard. That's been addressed through our process as well. And the other thing, just to mention, as Margaret Ann mentioned, buildings number 11 through 14 are along the eastern property line, that is the Brookwood subdivision. Those buildings have decreased in size in order to just make less impact on the adjacent neighbors. They've decreased in height, and they've also been widened, the gap between those buildings have widened just to make more penetrations through, through the site from the adjacent neighbors. And just for reference sake, every tree that's dark on the, on the site plan is an existing tree that we're going to do our best to preserve. Every tree that's light is more of a tree that's going to be introduced. So we just want you to realize, not only are we trying to preserve the trees around the historic home, we're definitely trying to keep the buffer intact that separates the Brookwood neighborhood from our development, and also wherever else we can preserve trees, we want to do our best to do that. One of the things that work in our favor, the site is relatively flat, and so the result of that is not going to take a tremendous amount of grading in order to get the program that we're projecting to land on the site. We do want to mention, however, that another point of concern, our concern just from a, just from a development standpoint, and also the neighbors' concern, was there's a cave on the right-hand corner towards the northern portion of the property, and that cave's in active water flow. And the neighbors, in the last, our last meeting, brought in a specialist to kind of talk about the geology of that cave, and we've learned a lot about the cave. We've also hired our own geotech service person to kind of do some analysis based on, on the cave as well. And so with that, we feel comfortable that we adjusted the site plan to accommodate any concerns that the cave may have in terms of structural. None of our foundations are located on top of the cave, we're almost 100 feet away from the cave entrance with our closest building. And we also, our developer went through the process of making sure wherever buildings were going to be projected to be, they did some exploratory digs to make sure that they get solid foundations under the places where foundations are projected to be. So the sensitivity of the site primarily being the historic home, being the cave, we feel like it had been addressed. And then another concern that we've, we've really felt was significant was just the buffer between the property lines, making sure that that is preserved. And this is a nice buffer, those trees are anywhere from 60 to 80 feet tall, majority of them evergreen, they've got a really nice understory in them, so really, it's a pretty non-penetrable type of buffer. However, on the back portion of the property, more towards the northern end, it has been cleared out, and our developer's more than willing to landscape that, to make sure there is, you know, a nice buffer between the adjacent property owner. And in site planning process, we'll do a landscape plan in detail, and that will cover any sort of buffer concerns we have. The neighbors have also requested that there be a privacy fence associated with, with the development, and we, our developers, more than committed to making sure that happens. The only thing, we don't know exactly right now is where it'll be located, because we do not want the fence to threaten the buffer. We don't want to clear out vegetation to put a fence, but the neighbors' primary concern has been that there's no, there's no sense of egress between the properties, that people just can't walk from one property to the other. So the privacy fence is really a physical divide to make sure the character of the neighborhood stays intact, and our development doesn't have any sort of, you know, just natural movement from people walking through. You see, this is a diagram, it's probably sheet 17 in your booklet, but this diagram shows the adjacent relationships we have to the neighborhood. The closest home to the property line is 45 feet. We're actually backing our buildings off 33 feet from the property line, so really, our closest building, 78 feet to the closest neighbor. And we feel like that's been a good concession to pull the building in, to create distance, as we learned in the past, really, distance is the greatest buffer we can have. So between the distance between the adjacent home, and also just the sheer verticality of the buffer, and just the, just preserving the naturalness, you know, not threatening that buffer, we feel like there's about as good a separation as you're going to get between the neighborhood and our development. Just another diagram on page 18 talks about, you know, that's even another relationship. In some situations, we're using a garage to actually add another layer, so you have the buffer, the fence, and the garage to create separation. Page 19 in your pattern book just shows you the different kind of architectural styles. It's pretty small on the screen, but if you can look on your, in your book, on 19, it just shows kind of just the character of the buildings. Those have gone through a lot of generations as well, working with the GDO standards with Margaret Ann, trying to make sure we feel like they're, they're consistent with GDO standards. And that would be varying roof lines, varying materials, defined base, porches, those kind of things. So working close with the staff, we feel like our, our architecture is consistent with, with what'd be expected within the GDO. And one thing, just to bring to the attention, the facade that you see on the bottom right of the four facades, that's really the facade of the town home. That's what the neighbors will see from the adjacent property. So what they're going to see is going to look like a front of a building versus a back of the building, because the garages are on the other side that will service the, service those units. So that's one more thing I think working in their favor, they're not looking really at what'd be considered a back of a building. And lastly, the clubhouse, our initial proposal for the clubhouse, one of the planning commissioners asked us to do a more detailed design related to that, so the developer and the architect are more than willing to go through that process. And so on page number 20, that is really the revised clubhouse, and we feel like it has much more of a character related to the house, and it's consistent with the period of time of the house in terms of architectural style. And that's what you're going to see from Manson Pike, so we feel like it's a real strong presentation from the road as well. I just want to say this in closing, it's been a real honor to work with this particular developer in terms of their passion to making sure that the, the history of the property was, was respected. And, and, and that was a choice that they really wanted to make, they weren't, the hand wasn't forced in order to do that. That was a decision they wanted to make if they could make their numbers work, and they feel like confidently that they can have both. We can have the home preserved, the natural character of the site preserved, the historic nature of the site preserved, and still allow them to make it a profitable proposition. So I, I was kind of struck by their willingness to go through the process and also to really respect the history of the site. So with that in mind, I think it's going to be a great project for Murphysboro. I know that the neighbors will have a few things to comment on, but I do appreciate them as well. They've been through a lot in terms of this process. We've met with them twice, one time informally, another time formally. We feel like we've listened to their primary concerns, you know. At the end of the day, one of the neighbors says, "We just don't want apartments next to our residence," and we understand that. But as Margaret Ann said, we feel like it is a good transition between residential to the apartment, the multifamily, on into a more commercial development. So with that in mind, we're asking for approval, but I'm more than willing to receive any questions you may have right now and follow up on the public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now going to conduct a public hearing. Before we open the public hearing, we'll remind that our rules to the public hearing, if you're representing yourself, it's three minutes; if you're representing a group, you have five minutes. If you'll make all questions and comments, direct those to the city council, please. We'll get you answers as soon as we close the public hearing. Also, when you come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, and we'll do everything we can to get, get questions answered. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? We're going to open the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Smith, I live at 3949 Hallmark Drive. I concede or commend the builders and the architects for the thought and concern that they have given this particular project. It's, it's much better than it was presented about the middle of last year. It's a tremendous improvement, but we still have some concerns, we have some concerns with, or I do, with the safety and the character of that that's going to be left in our neighborhood when this property is developed into a large or a small compact area with a large number of units in it. I do understand that, that particular area will be developed. I just wish it was going to be developed with owner-occupied, some owner-occupied approach. At one of our meetings, we, there was something said about how the, we, we might have felt that people moving into apartments were less than desirable neighbors, and that's not necessarily the case, it's not the case, at least for myself and some of the others. But it's the number of people that's, that's going to be there. The traffic will be increased tremendously. Also, with the other developments going down Manson Pike and over on Blackman Road, over the next five years, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of, of building being done. There's apartments right across the street that's being expanded, additional units being built. Right down the street prior to going over the 840, there's more units being built there. Those are going to be owner-occupied, but it's still a lot of units in a dense area. None of this pertains to this particular project and how it affects us, but it does how it affects the neighborhood and the community of Blackman. And then right around the corner, like I said, on Blackman, there's 750 units coming in there eventually. Of more concern, or, or some additional concerns that I picked up on tonight, one was that the access road, Blackman, I'm sorry, Hallmark, is, was going to be used for the emergency fire trucks to come in, but then I heard something about delivery and service truck accessed through that way. I don't know if I misunderstood what was said, but that's the way I heard it. And I also heard the phrase saying that, that the home would stay, the, the old home would stay for now. I mean, I, I mean, nothing lasts forever, but when I hear the word "for now" being said, when they're trying to get it developed, it makes me think that they're already planning two, three, four years down the road, that maybe the house is not going to be, you know, affordable to, you know, to keep. We've, we've lost one old home down at, at the corner by the interstate, which was several years ago. Bottom line is, yes, I really don't want this development next to, next to our subdivision. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tammy Cleek, I live at 3957 Hallmark Drive in Brookwood. I emailed you guys my talking points yesterday, and those were just hard copies and pictures that I thought would be good for you guys to look at maybe tonight. I want to start sort of with the point number four, and then go back to one, or point number five, I guess it is. So sorry, I'm starting at the end, and then I'm going back to one. I want to say that Jason Richards did come to the planning meeting and did speak. We did ask him to come, and he did, and he spoke. There is one thing that he didn't speak about, and it is in your packet, and I emailed it to you, and it's a map that has a big bold red line down the middle. This was sent to me, and then it was sent to our neighborhood meeting. We talked to him on conference call we had before the last meeting. So I'll come back to that red line and that map, but that's what I want to say about Jason right now. Going back to point one, the town homes that are going to be built 11 through 14, that's in the developer's plan book, I understand now, I think I misunderstood, I thought the balconies were going to be facing east toward the subdivision. I believe they're going to be facing inward, if I understand correctly, with the garage doors. So that is incorrect on my notes, if that is the case. I do feel like the eastern portion of this plan is still heavy, especially the, the further back it gets. There are these four town homes, and then there's a three-story building past those on down near the cave. So I do feel like it's still heavy, and that bothers me because there's a lot of green space on the other side. I do realize they don't want to cut the pretty trees because they're all pretty over there. I do understand that. But if that home is not going to be here for years, I'm wondering why we don't divide up some of those homes and go ahead and put some on the other side? Because if that's not going to be green space, and that historical home's not going to be there until it falls down, until years and years and years, we should divide it up now, I think, and not make it heavy on the side of Hallmark. Those town homes are very close to the line, it's the closest to the line, as he said. That concerns me. And in your packet, you will see that the trees are not as dense as on our side. You can see through them, and it's your next stapled packet that has 3958 at the top. It's our view from Brookwood's side, and you can see through pretty well, except for one area down toward the cave, which is grown up and hasn't been cleared out as much. So that concerns me. So I'm moving on to number two, the fence. They have a six-foot fence listed. Really, in my heart, feel like an eight-foot fence is what we need. I drove around town, I wanted to see what everyone had, and someone in one of the last meetings mentioned at the end of Atlas was a situation near like ours. So I drove to the end of Atlas, and I did find a home, apartments rather, and a home. It's on the packet that's, the fence is on the front, six foot versus eight foot. And let me go ahead and say that, on that picture, that shows a six-foot fence and an eight-foot fence, and the difference it makes. A six-foot fence, most men can either get on their tippy toes, or they can look over without any trouble, and a lot of women can. And they can climb it easier than I believe they could in eight foot, there'd be more effort involved. So that's two really good pictures there to show that. The second part of that picture, it shows the apartments that you guys mentioned, and maybe we want to take a look at at the end of Atlas, and I did. And it's sort of dark, I apologize for the quality, but if you will look, there's a six-foot fence, and then there's a garage similar to what's going to be next to my home, except I believe the garage doors are going to open to the inside, which is good. But you can see the six-foot fence doesn't even cover the opening of the garage, the garage door's up. An eight-foot fence, you, you would cover that opening. So that proves that a six-foot versus an eight-foot can make a difference. Those are three-story apartments behind there, and that is at the end of Atlas. Panther Creek, I went there, it's across the way from us, and I went to the homes behind it, and Panther Creek has a great distance between the, the nearest home I could find. There's a great difference, it's on the bottom of your page, got it listed, Panther Creek, and there's a lot of trees and a lot of underbrush, and it's a great distance away. So that's my two points, or three, maybe, I went on that, that I wanted to make on that. Okay. The buffer, I was a little bit confused about the buffer. I saw in some of the, the readouts in the plan booklet of theirs where it was going to be 12-foot, and then I saw some eight-foot listed. I'd like to have that clarified, because I've looked down all the trees on the eastern portion, the borders, our subdivision and this property, you can see through all of them on our side. If you will look at the ones I took, I've got them listed 3957 Hallmark and 3958. It's no trouble to see through there, and we have beautiful sunsets that come raging through there, which we love, but I took this one just the other day from my car. I mean, you can see through there, walk through there, it's, it's very sparse. And so is it at 3958 even more so, and when you get down toward the cave where it borders 3958, there's nothing. I think that was mentioned earlier, so I am wanting that clarified. I'm not sure they, if it's eight-foot trees they're talking about, but a 12-foot buffer all the way down, which I'm hoping it is a 12-foot buffer all the way down with eight-foot trees or, or something in that range. But that would be the only thing that would satisfy me there, if we do have to have this there. And I'd like to clarify, I'm only saying these, these things because it's not my wish to have this here, as Mr. Smith said. I don't feel that it's a good transition or the best transition. I feel like owner-occupied would be the best transition, town homes owner-occupied or single homes or whatever. I, I just feel it would be better suited for our subdivision and what we've built there in terms of quality and, and relationships and people and the age of our people and the, the age of our subdivision. So I wanted to also say about the, the gate, I would like the gate, of course, to be eight-foot versus six-foot, that's going to be there, that's going to be used for emergency equipment, and I do hope that's the only thing that's used for, because we didn't hear anything, like Mr. Smith said, about service vehicles until tonight, and that would be a problem because our street is not that big, service and delivery trucks, and that would be a real problem for us there. There's nowhere to turn around except our driveways. And if they go in and turn around, it would still be a problem because it would be heavy traffic. And then I want to circle back around just one more thing about Jason Richards. I wanted to say that, that big red line down that map, Jason told me, he sent this to me, and I asked him, he was talking about the cave, and I said, "Jason, what is the big red line?" And he said, "Did I send you the one with the big red line?" And I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "Oh, I didn't mean to send that one." He said, "That is a passageway that myself and Marbury Harden found the last time we were in Military Spring Cave." He said, "It's there." He said, "The debris's built up a little bit, but there's room to go in, but we didn't have time, but when we went back, we were not allowed on the property, neither MTSU property or this property that we're talking about tonight, and told to get off and not come back." So that was per them, what they were told. So I asked him about this, and so did we over in our neighborhood meeting, because he called in and already had the map, so it was on the screen. He said, "I don't know where it goes, I don't know how deep it is." And it scares me because I've talked to attorneys, environmental attorneys, and I've talked to some geologists, and I've talked to just about anybody, anybody I could talk to, and they say that if you have an unknown, it's better to go underground, subsurface. You can do geoticks all day on top, and that was done, and I appreciate that being done, but we don't know where this one goes, and they obviously found it, and Marbury Harden actually told me about it first. Jason didn't tell me first, I don't know if he knows that or not, but he did send me this map. So that's a very grave concern of mine, because I am very concerned about the environment. But I appreciate your time, I appreciate your kindness, each and every one of you, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cleek. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Then we'll consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 15OZ 56, to zone an area at 3726 Manson Pike, is planned residential development, PRD District, Springfield Apartments, and Gateway Design Overlay, GDO 1 District. We've got several questions, Ms. Green, that I think that I took notes on, and if I miss one, y'all, y'all let me know. The first question was, will the home stay?
The home is going to stay, they're going to make some improvements to the exterior, it's going to remain, and it's going to be allowed to be used as a single-family residence, and they're committing to that in the program.
When they say "for now," does that mean, would it be kind of like any other PRD? If they did want to change something later, they'd have to come back through Planning Commission and Council?
They would. I don't know if, yeah, I mean, they would if they wanted to get, do something different than the plan, and the plan is specifically.
If they wanted to knock it down and build another apartment building, they'd have to come back through. I mean, it wouldn't be like they could just do it next year, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Would this be similar to what the developers at Merrimott did with, with the home out there? The?
It's similar, and I actually use Merrimott as an example to them. They wanted to commit to doing all these things to the home, and I was very cautious because initially, when the Merrimott plan came through, they said, "These are things we're going to do." And then after the plan, they amended it a couple times concerning that mansion, because they realized that there's some, some things about the house that they couldn't turn it to commercial-type use. So I wanted them to actually study the home before they made any commitments, and come back, when they came back, they needed to be sure that it could be something that could be saved. They said they've gotten people out, they've gotten people to look at it, inspectors, and they are confident that it is in sound condition and needs some repairs, maintenance repairs, but not any fundamental problems with it, so that it certainly can still be used as a single-family home. So this is a similar situation, and I learned from Merrimott Springs.
The next question we had, and I do think this is a valid question overall, the traffic, how are we looking for, for traffic in the area when, as far as road upgrades and, you know, looking at what's coming down the Pike on the Shelton Farm, and how are we, we looking at that?
Specifically, we, we know that this area has, it was going to grow, is going to grow, and that's part of the reason we decided to specifically study the area. Manson Pike was rebuilt by the city, although much of the property adjacent to it is in the county, because we are anticipating growth. It is a three-lane street section with a continuous turn lane, so we knew it was coming, it was, the schools were the impetus for that, and the extension of the sewer, and actually, the developments helping to repay for the sewer that we extended for the schools is something that we've been planning for, and that's why we have the land use plan in this
Ms. Cleek was referring to a six-foot fence in the, in the buffer at the same time, but is there, has there been talk of an eight-foot fence, and then what is the width of the buffer?
So they are committing to meet the buffer requirement that our zoning ordinance requires, which is a minimum 12-foot wide buffer. In addition to the 12-foot wide landscape buffer, they're also proposing a six-foot fence. Six feet is an industry standard for a privacy fence, so that's in addition to the landscape buffer. And the zoning ordinance allows you to put a fence up and reduce the amount of landscaping, but that's not what they're proposing. They're proposing to have a 12-foot buffer that meets our type C standards, and in addition to that, to put a privacy fence up. And they've, they've shown some examples of the privacy fences. The eight-foot fence, Ms. Cleek emailed you all, but I think it's the first time we've heard of, heard of it. Six feet is what standard, though.
Can I ask a question out there? So when I, when I looked at, let's see, page 14 on the plan book, I, I thought the same thing that she thought, actually, and there was a, I think I saw the same thing that she saw too, but when you look at the page 14, it kind of outlines the 12-foot landscape buffer, as well as a 25-foot side yard setback on what would be the, I don't know, the western or the southern kind of half of this, the, the kind of half of this, the development. And then once you get back to kind of the north or east side, it doesn't, it only talks about the six-foot opaque fence. But is there also a 12-foot landscape buffer also already there? I see the line, but it doesn't.
There's existing trees there, they can get credit for existing trees if they meet certain requirements by the Urban Environmental Department. But yes, the buffer extends along that entire property line. There's a couple exhibits on pages 17 and 18, and I think these maybe gave Ms. Cleet some confusion as well. You can see, page 17, it's kind of like a plan view, it shows the townhome buildings 13 and the home at 3958 Hallmark Drive. You can see there's a 25-foot distance between the property line, and they've got to the edge of the area, but there's, it says eight-foot supplementary landscape screen. So that's just in addition to what was required. They're doing the required type buffer, but in addition to that, in this area where the home is, to add additional screening, they're doing an eight-foot supplementary landscape screening.
So it's eight, not 12?
No, in addition to what would be required. So a buffer is designed, or is described in the zoning ordinance as being a minimum width and a minimum amount of landscaping. So in addition, they're exceeding the minimum amount of landscaping by adding an additional eight-feet amount of landscape buffer. The width is there, but this is just adding more landscaping than would be required.
You know, the pictures that she provided us in these hard copies, I don't know if you've seen them or not yet, are definitely a little kind of, I mean, they're definitely eye-opening from a perspective of, they're not really the same angle or whatever that you might see in the book, that I was looking at in the book. They really do show a little bit, you know, those pine trees are pretty thin in a lot Maybe I should ask them that, but so I guess I just want to make sure, there is going to be a 12-foot width. Is that eight-foot landscape buffer, is that eight feet wide, or is that eight feet tall? I know that sounds silly, but.
Let me see. I'll invite the design team to lectern.
Showing eight foot tall.
It says eight feet tall.
With a 12-foot width.
They couldn't do less of a buffer than we would require without getting an exception, and it's not defined as an exception. So when we review the site plan, they wouldn't allow an exception.
Yeah, and I agree with Margaret Ann. It's just really, the goal is to make sure we do our best to preserve the existing tree line because it's substantial. If there's gaps, as Margaret Ann said, we'll probably be seeking an alternative landscape plan to make sure we get credit for those trees that are already existing, but we're going to have to meet the city standards in terms of what that type C buffer is going to be. But that may be a combination of the existing tree with supplemental landscaping as well. And then the fence is really, it's really a twofold. One is, usually if you have a fence, you can reduce your buffer requirement, they're going to hold the buffer requirement. The fence is primarily there to make sure there's no sense of, it's really the safety issue that Mr. Smith spoke of initially, that there's no sort of egress between the two properties, people moving around. They want to make sure that their neighborhood stays distinct from the apartments. But I feel like outside of where the neighbors have kind of cleared and thinned, there's a pretty decent, there's just a decent tree stand. I think it's really fortunate for our developer and for us that in a lot of situations, there's not, you know, 80-foot tall trees that are lining this piece of property, and our grades are favorable that those trees should be able to stay intact.
So I guess I would ask you, just so I'll, since she brought it up, two questions. Are there going to be delivery trucks or not?
Now, I don't know where the delivery trucks came from.
I know where that came from. I said, "Service vehicles would use that entrance." I mean, fire truck, a fire truck is a service vehicle, and that's what that is.
Easy enough. Would an eight-foot fence be doable for your clients? I'm just, since she's brought it up, I'm asking.
Mr. Roundtree, I would prefer an eight-foot fence. I'm just telling you.
Yeah, an eight-foot fence would be more than acceptable, and we'll make sure it looks good. Again, it's there for security, it's not really there for a lot of other purposes. So that's a concession we need to make, that's one we're willing to make. And again, I appreciate, there's been a lot of passion in the Brookwood subdivision, they've done well to represent themselves. And we want to be good neighbors, we want them to feel like we've done the best we could to really kind of meet their hopes. And they're definitely kind of an island, there's a lot of element going around, they've got a really nice character there, and hopefully as much as possible, that buffer will stay intact for them.
All right, just one more question. The passageway in the cave, I don't know if you saw that or the picture on that, is there any way to, I mean, I don't know about geotechnical stuff, so I mean, is it, if, what's the possible ramifications of if there is a passageway underneath there? I mean.
Well, again, I think the best we've done so far, because, I mean, I think the interesting thing is, it's really in the developer's interest to make sure that the foundations can be bored by the ground below.
Yeah.
These are not, you know, two-foot digs. They went down to where they felt confident that what was below the substrate of that dirt is able to support the weight of these buildings. And all the corners of the buildings have been marked, and they went through the effort. I mean, it's due diligence on their part to make sure they're not buying a piece of land that's just like a sieve. And as far as the cave itself, you know, there's been some questions about how to armor that cave to make sure it can't be, you know, no one can get in it, and that's, there's still a little bit of question mark exactly how we're going to, you know, keep our residents from that access point. But I know in so many ways, we see a lot of that green space behind the property as an amenity. And so we're going to do our best to try to find that compromise, to make sure the cave is protected, that our citizens are safe. But we know we can't close off the cave, that won't happen.
So I think what I'm hearing is compromises that the fence moves to eight feet, and that includes the gate, the gate would be with that, and then the landscape buffer is guaranteed at 12-foot, which is already.
Right.
And I'm going down my list of, am I missing anything? Bill, did I miss anything?
Got it. You got it.
Any more questions for Mr. Roundtree? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Did you close the public hearing? Yeah, I closed it already.
You ready for a motion? Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make some comments, if I could. Mr. Smith, I really appreciate your honesty. We hear more stuff up here and on the Planning Commission than we can ever imagine, and I appreciate your honesty. And Ms. Cleet, I appreciate the hard work you've done to protect your neighborhood, and it's going to pay off. They're going to do both for you. They're going to give you an eight-foot fence, and they're going to make sure that that landscape berm is supplemented to give you privacy. There'll be no egress, traffic egress going back and forth. They've addressed the cave issue by bringing a cave expert in here. They've made sure that the house would be utilized and not bulldozed down because property owner could bulldoze down the house tomorrow if this blows up and goes away. And none of us want that. So I think that this is a win-win for everybody. I think the neighborhood didn't get exactly what it wanted, but it got a whole lot of what it wanted. And I'd like to thank the developer for having two public meetings and letting the Planning Commission turn it down the first time and sending it back for more study. I think this is a good opportunity to save the house, and with that, I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any discussion? Ms. Wright, the call roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to item eight, consider recommendations of the Airport Commission, and we're looking at approving a professional services agreement with Michael Baker to provide inventory and programming for a new general aviation terminal at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport.
Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for this opportunity to come before you. As you know, the Airport Commission is working on the new design of a terminal building for the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. And in doing so, and to help them with this very exciting process, they've asked for a design, terminal design team to come onboard and assist them, and it's a very dynamic group. We've had several occasions to get together, meet, discuss, brainstorm about what this building might be that could represent our community and also meet the needs, the modern needs of the travelers that come in and out of our community through the airport, and also be a place that if businesses come into Murfreesboro, they can conduct their business with local people here, at our facilities there at the airport. This group has even gone out to look at some of our best examples of some terminals around the Tennessee area from various sizes, communities, and facilities. And the last thing that they did was went out to, went out for bid or a selection committee got together, and we interviewed, we had seven different architectural firms come and give us their qualifications. From that seven, we interviewed five. They were such a great competitive, good group that came before us. We have selected Michael Baker to do this, to be our architect for this project. But before we can get to the scoping portion of their contract, we still have quite a few good questions and concerns that the design committee has that needs to be answered. And in talking with Michael Baker, they agreed that there's still just a few steps that need to be taken, and they agreed to help us with this professional services agreement to just get us that little bit closer so we can go out to scope. This has been reviewed by our legal department and is found agreeable, and the cost to do this is $27,675. And of course, this all goes towards the design of the terminal. The Airport Commission recommends your approval of this professional services agreement.
Chad, have a question for you. Will there be some conference room space where if I want to bring a plane in from Dallas and a plane in from Pittsburgh at a common point and have a day meeting in Murfreesboro, I don't have to fly them all over the country, but I could come to a central location and have a day meeting with my people and then send them home?
Yes, one of the aspects that the design team and even the Airport Commission agreed that they'd like to see at this facility is a multipurpose room, a large enough for a large group to get together or a small group to conduct those kinds of meetings, whether it be from people out of town, or maybe there's some meetings that need to occur on the north side of Murfreesboro, this could be the facility for that. And it would have an awesome view. Also with it, we would have some smaller, regular board meeting rooms if the, you know, the meeting you would have would be a little bit more intimate or anything like that. Again, connections to modern communication and all that would be in those facilities as well. And one other thing, Mr. Young, is just on the airport facilities itself, with the university being there, there's been several occasions where the university has had forums with, for example, one of the forums that they hosted was a Chinese aviation, general aviation forum, kind of an international event, and we had to hold it in a hangar. This facility could have that capability and really be a good facility for that kind
I really want to thank Chad and the Airport Commission for the vision that they've taken on this. And we laughed, this was all a conversation that started, no joke, from a two-year-old kid that one day Drew, my two-year-old or three-year-old now likes to watch airplanes. And so after soccer practice every Wednesday, while the kids are practicing, we went to the airport. And so I called Chad one day and said, "Hey, man, when are we going to do some work on the terminal?" And Chad took off. And so that's where it all started. So anyway, I think this is exciting, and it went to the Airport Commission a month or so ago, and they, every one are super excited and fired up about this process, so.
Chad, when was that building built, 52?
The original building was built in 1952, and there was later an addition on the north wing in 86.
You think we got our money's worth?
I think so.
We need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright. Thank you, Chad.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Chad, before you leave, tell them what's happening next week.
Next week, the Embassy Suites here, we're hosting the Tennessee Aviation Association. We'll have over 300 members of airports around Tennessee and also the various firms and exhibitors and sponsors of that. This is the third year that it's been in Murfreesboro at the Embassy Suites, and it's been a great success here. The people at Embassy Suites have done a wonderful job of helping us host that, and it's been a great location for us. A lot of people have commented on its ease to get in and out, and just a great place to meet.
You have some people flying in for that?
Absolutely.
Not surprised. Thank you, Chad. All right, now we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings for zoning RM 16 at 1710 East Northfield Boulevard, rezoning along Conference Center Boulevard and Avenue Way PRD, rezoning in Liberty Cove subdivision RS 10 and RS 15, annexation plan of services and annexation petition along Blackman Road and Florence Road, zoning along Blackman Road and Florence Road PRD, annexation plan of services and annexation petition west of Manchester Pike, zoning west of Manchester Pike to A1, annexation plan of services and annexation petition along New Salem Highway, and zoning along New Salem Highway CF in RM 16. Don't make me say that again.
Good evening, Mayor, I don't think I should talk that. And council members. During its regular meeting on March 2, 2016, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on several annexation requests and zoning requests that the mayor just mentioned. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed the matters and then took action to recommend their approval. It's recommended that the City Council schedule matters for public hearings at this meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, keeping in mind that the annexations need to be scheduled at least 30 days out.
Mayor, we would suggest April 21st.
All of them at the same time?
Yes, we, I believe we can handle all of these at the same time. It was not a long Planning Commission meeting when these were considered.
Okay. Move for approval for April 21st.
Second?
No, April 21st.
Whatever day you said.
I got it. You got to be sure.
I'm just following him.
Who's on first? Yeah. Think about it.
We have a motion in a second for the 21st. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Wish I had a drone. Consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager, A E Employee, Vastberry and Sims to Service Bond Counsel. Mr. Cumber.
Mayor, tonight we're asking for council to enter into the next phase of the capital improvement program. Back in the month of December, you approved an $88.8 million capital improvement plan from previous bond issue savings and from county shared bonds for schools. That results in us needing to size a $79 million general obligation bond offering. I'd like to invite John Warner with Cumberland Securities to come up. John is representing Cumberland on our particular transaction, and has been a great assistance to us in putting together the documents that go along with a bond sale. John has the advantage of having seen both sides of the financing world. In his previous life, he was Finance Director in Knox County, and has been with Cumberland Securities now.
Three and a half years.
Three and a half years. So John's got, John wears hats both in the public sector and the private sector. I'm going to ask John if he would to discuss the mechanics of the issue. If you have any questions about the specific items that are in the CIP projects, we'll be glad to tackle those. But the three items before you tonight, employee Vastberry and Sims as Bond Counsel for the transaction, the initial resolution to start the process, and the bond resolution that details the financing. So John, you would?
Thank you very much. Again, my name is John Warner, I'm with Cumberland Securities out of Knoxville. I want to say on the front end how honored we are to have the opportunity to work with Murfreesboro. It's been an absolute pleasure, particularly working with the staff of the city, Rob, Jim, and Melissa. I don't think there's a job that Melissa doesn't do for the city, I'm convinced of that now. The resolutions you have in front of you, the first one you will be addressing is going to be the initial resolution. to be the initial resolution. And basically, what it announces to the world is that the city of Murfreesboro is going to issue bonds for $79 million. And more importantly, there's a provision at the end where it says this is going to be published in a local paper, and it will be, it will start a 20-day protest period. And that's consistent with Tennessee Code Annotated 921-206. After the passage of this resolution, if it pleases the council, the second thing will be your detailed resolution. And this is where you get into the mechanics of what the bond issue is. In summary, what you're going to be proposing, what you're going to be voting for is a competitive public sale, 15-year amortization, general obligation bonds. They will be backed by the ad valorem taxing power of the city of Murfreesboro, and it will go specifically for the projects that are mentioned both in the initial and the detailed resolution. It'll also go through the mechanics of what happens on the day of the bond sale, who's authorized to act on behalf of the city to, you know, do certain things for this. It will also allow you to engage legal counsel or bond counsel, and also the mechanics on how you're going to award these bids, which will be based on the lowest true interest cost on the day of the sale. That's kind of a summary of what you have. Are there any specific questions? I'd be glad to entertain them.
What happens to the bond? If we, for instance, have $6 million slated for the Hobgood expansion, what happens if we only spend $3 million?
Well, what you can do is, you can do three different things with bond proceeds. First of all, it goes to the projects that we mentioned. The second thing is, you can use it to actually pay debt service, or it can go into your capital projects fund. What we could possibly do is, since it's going to be over a five-year period, we can make adjustments on, you know, how much you actually need to have. We don't want to have too much money sitting around. Plus, you also have IRS requirements as far as the bid down, I mean, excuse me, the spend down requirements within a three-year period to get certain projects done. So we would make adjustments rolling forward so that we could take any excess money you might have, you know, under budget, that sort of thing, and put it towards new ones.
It's basically borrowing less next year.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
I think it's important to listen to John describe the process. The city hasn't had many open-market sales of general obligation debt. We're kind of neophytes at this process. So if you have any questions, the $88 million, two-thirds of it's wrapped up in three items in your capital improvement plan, $42 million plus Highland Avenue Police Headquarters, $10 million as a placeholder for purchase of real estate for a new park in the west side of town, $6-plus million for the next expansion at Hobgood.
Bellwood in that?
No, this is Hobgood in this particular issue. Black Fox is next in sequence, and it's in the CIP two years down the road.
About a new fire hall on Thompson Medical Center.
We're, we have enough bond issued savings from prior years that the financing for that appears to be safe in the prior year savings.
Jim, I understand, you know, our debt's rolling off in these 15 years as this runs its sequence. Do you have any idea, and I'm not looking for an exact number, but roughly how much debt the city has today?
June 30, 2015, the city had $203 million of debt, for a round number. So we've planned out for a five-year period in your capital improvement plan. Obviously, only the first year is what's being implemented here before, one of the better parts of our financial policies, and I've got to look at it because I like it, an adopted capital improvement plan shall be the basis of determining the city's borrowing. So before the next round of projects, we would go back, refresh that capital improvement plan, present it back to council. If you remember, one of the things we did at the time we presented in December was we kind of shifted money between the years so that the financial ratios that are in your policies don't get exceeded in any of that five-year window. So while there are other projects down the road, how we propose them, when we propose them, can still move.
But roughly after this is added, we'll be at about $280 million worth of debt.
More or less.
And we've got over $1 billion in assets right now. Is that correct?
I think the new property roll is going to be about $1.3 billion.
Is there a ratio that we try to target and stay below? Is there a number there that?
We do have in your financial policies, 2.5% of actual value of property in the community. And we're roughly at that midpoint of that range.
So we're well within what the?
We didn't come close to exceeding any of the ratios in the financial policy.
And even if your, even if your property values remain the same, the assessed values remain the same, given the roll-off over the next five years, in addition to the new debt you're going to be putting on, you're still going to be below that, you'll still be in compliance with your.
It's not just accumulating, there is rolling off.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The Wi-Fi has died on my machine, but just this afternoon, Cumberland produced a graphic to show how the debt from this new issue puts up the debt service, and then how it steps down until this bond is repaid in 15 years.
Do you remember about how much?
I'll try to ship that to you guys by email.
Don't we have, not as good a memory as I used to, but don't we have, isn't it somewhere in the neighborhood of $24 million that's rolling off this year that we're paying off?
The, we annually are paying about $30 million a year in principal and interest. There is a step down in the debt service in fiscal 2017.
Okay. So that, even though that we're looking at bringing on that 79, that's not counting the 30-year that we're rolling off this year that we're paying off?
That's.
So really, we're going to be, if we're bringing up.
It'll be about 250, so.
Yeah, so we'll be close to where we are now.
John's ahead of me. He says 223 million after the roll.
And I'm tickled with having this discussion for the public to know that, you know, the financial obligations that the city has done ever since I've been on the council, it's been impressive, to be honest with you, even through the downturn years. It's been impressive. And don't get caught up in a lot of debt, because as a city, you're going to have that. If you're a growing city, you're going to have roads to build, things are going to come up, you're going to have that. And thank goodness for the growth and the prosperity of this city and kind of his head. This city's been able to maintain its financial stability over a long time. City managers before me, you know, so.
And, you know, I was reading, I was reading a financial analysis one day, and someone put it in perspective to say, you know, if your family were to pass away and they gave you a business that was worth $1 billion, and it had $220 million in debt, and at the same time, it brought in $140 million a year in revenue. What would you look at and say? And I think we all would say, wow, that we would be blessed, you know? So the loan-to-value, when you look at, you're only 70, you know, 24% or 23%, that's a pretty good, pretty good day from running a business that way. So. We have a motion on, I guess I need to read the motion. Consider for adoption Resolution Number 16R06 authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed $79 million in one or more series, making provisions for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof, and the disposition of proceeds therfrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal or premium, if any, in interest on the bonds.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor, if I could, we're going to also need to employ Vastberry and Sims. Mr. Warner's been gracious with his time thus far, but we need to get him under contract. That would be item 10A.
We thought he was doing it for free, so.
She does off work for free.
Oh, okay.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
There are actually two bond resolutions, O5 and O6.
Okay. We've done six. We've employed Vastberry and Sims. So we're going to go, since I've messed this completely up, we're going to consider for adoption Resolution Number 16R05, initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed $79 million, to provide funding for certain public works projects, and to fund the incidental and necessary expenses related thereto.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Wright, it looks like we have a couple of beer applications.
We do. We have a special event permit from the Earth Experience, the Middle Tennessee Museum of Natural History, for an event they're having at their location on April the 23rd. That application is in order, and we recommend approval. We also have a couple of applications for a name change for corporation. The first address is at 4106 Franklin Road, that's a convenience store. And the second location is 3208 South Church Street, also a convenience store. The permits are for off-premise retail, and all they lack is their occupancy approval. So we would like to approve those permits as the rest of the application meets our requirements, once they meet those final occupancy inspections. We have a pool hall with restaurant and bar area at 1253 Northwest Broad Street. It's an ownership change along with a name change. The application meets our requirements for the background check, and they do lack their building codes inspection. So once that is done with your approval, we would like to issue that permit. It is in order otherwise. And finally, we have a grocery market at 1156 East Main Street, an ownership change and a name change, and that application meets our background inspections. They are pending their business, I'm sorry, their building codes inspections. Otherwise, it's in order, and we'd like to issue that with your approval, once they finish those occupancy application inspections.
Ms. Wright, what's the name of that market?
La Esquina, La Esquena. I don't speak Spanish. I don't know. Would you like to give it a try?
You want to try the name for the person who filled that in the application?
I would not. Now, I do have a lady in my office who takes these who speaks Spanish, and she would have been glad to interpret this for both of us.
Thank you.
Step of motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any statements?
No, sir, not tonight.
Any other business from the staff of the City Council? Have one quick thing. We have two Boy Scouts who are working on their Eagle Scout badge. We have Ethan and John Summer, if y'all don't mind standing up. I think they're working on their citizenship badge and the community merit badge that's required for their Eagle Scout, and they're attending a council meeting tonight as a requirement. And little do they know that their dad and I were in the same study group at MTSU for accounting, and he is absolutely the smartest accountant that I've met besides Ms. Wright. Throw that in really quick. So thank y'all for coming to the council meeting tonight. All right, seeing no other business? One more thing. MTSU won tonight, both games. The ladies beat Rice, and the men came back and beat Charlotte.